This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April 16th. Please stand for our invocation led by Public Safety Chaplain Lynn Chilton and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
When I was asked to pray for you, folks, about two weeks ago, I've been thinking about, my goodness, what do I pray for you? And so I've been thinking about all the weeks. And so it led me to want to say thank you for all that you do. It takes a special kind of person to be public servants, and we're just really grateful. I speak as one of the members of this community, but I thank you. But as I always begin to think about it, at our church, we sang several songs. You probably heard some of them. It'll be better, Better By and By, and then another one, I'll Fly Away. These are all pushed in churches. And then What A Friend We Have In Jesus was one of them. And I'm going to read the second phrase of that song because you'll never have a friend like Jesus. But let me read what he says. I think it's a place when I heard it, I said, that's a good place to start. Here's what it says. Have we trials and temptations? I'd say so. Is there trouble anywhere? We should never be discouraged. Take it to the Lord in prayer. He goes on to say, can we find a friend so faithful who will all our sorrows bear? Jesus knows our every weakness. Take it to the Lord in prayer. And I'm glad that I get to be a part of this. That's where y'all start every time. It's a good place to start. So thank you for letting me be a part of it. Lord Jesus, we're so thankful for servants and for people that you've prepared. And Father, I know it takes a special gift and a calling, Father, to do this with joy and to do it with completeness and, Father, with success. And so I just pray, Father, that you would give wisdom to these people and a heart that understands and a discernment that goes beyond our human nature. And God, I pray that you would protect everyone here in a special way, Father. And we just want to tell you that we trust you, that we're satisfied with you, Jesus, and we invite you into this place to help lead these young men and women as they handle the affairs that presented to them today. So glad we just thank you for being in this place. I pray again that you would lift them up. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brokaw, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our April 16th, 2024 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibratory position, the off or the vibratory position. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person that has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell would sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of April the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
One, two. I may need Joe Snowden to read this for me. Joe, matter of fact, I know I'm not going to make it through without doing a lot of coughing. If you would do that.
Well, good morning. We're here to present a proclamation to the Coast Guard units here in Mobile. So the proclamation reads, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence remains a tolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in Alabama. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and violence impact women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, many of whom can do, experience acquaintance rape, stranger rape, gang rape, serial rape, date rape, sexual assault, incest, stalking, ritual abuse, sexual harassment, child to sexual manipulation, prostitution, pornography, and whereas we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and ensure that survivors are not re-victimized. And whereas staff and volunteers of victim support programs in Alabama work year-round to encourage every person to advocate for victims and survivors' rights, plus the restoration of peace in every home. Therefore, we, as citizens and community members of Mobile, have a duty to promote an environment that is free from all forms of sexual violence, and we have an obligation to not tolerate any form of sexual violence or threat of sexual violence within the confines of our influence, which includes threatening behavior that results in physical or emotional injury to any person, and have the responsibility to teach our children, youth, and adults to become aware of the impact of sexual violence in our community. And we commit ourselves to take action and vow to take a stand against sexual violence in our homes and community. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Mobile. I, along with all the members of the Mobile City Council, Mobile Community Victim Advocates, and Coast Guard Sector Mobile Victim Advocates, do hereby declare that each day of the year is an opportunity to create a change for the future, done at the City of Mobile of Alabama this 16th day of April 2024. Signed, William S. Stimson, Mayor.
So the last several years, Captain Ulysses Mullins has accepted this, but he also has with him today Captain Scott Lugo, who is the ATC Training Center Captain, and Captain Burnham, who's the captain of the Gulf Coast Strike Team. So we really appreciate all that each and every one of you do and what your teams do. I see we have a lot of coasties here. We have several coasties here with us today. And so just again, thank you very much, Captain, if you'd like to make a few remarks.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor Stimson and the City Council of Mobile. It's always a pleasure to be here to address you all. So Sexual Assault Prevention Month, as was said in the proclamation, is not just a one-day thing. It's a daily effort. This year, and the DOD's program has stepped forward and asking for everyone to prevent, report, and advocate for sexual assault victims and their families. And so we thank the City of Mobile for being a partner in that with the military. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Y'all would like to do a picture? We can actually do it outside.
Thank y'all so much for y'all's services also.
Thank y'all for all being here. I'm going to read a proclamation to the representatives from Circle K, and then when it's done, if y'all could come down and we'll take a picture. Whereas Circle K's success in the convenience retailing industry spans more than 60 years. Its roots trace back to 1951, when Fred Hervey purchased three K's food stores in El Paso, Texas. His enterprising spirit enabled the company to make its mark in the southwestern part of the United States. And whereas during the next few decades, Circle K grew its retail network through a series of acquisitions, which were incorporated into the Circle K brand. By 1975, there were 1,000 Circle K stores across the U.S. And whereas in 1979, Circle K entered the international market when a licensing agreement established the first Circle K store in Japan. The company's growth continued. By 1984, sales had reached $1 billion. Whereas in 1999, a franchise program was introduced to support operations looking to build a business with a leading convenience store brand. Circle K was acquired by Elementation. I'm not going to read the rest, Couche-Tard, in 2003. And whereas today, in more than 24 countries and territories, Circle K has become one of the most widely recognized convenience store brands. And whereas on March 1st, 2024, the hosting of Circle K's first Bike Night occurred in Theodore, Alabama, at the newly remodeled Circle K located at 6585 Range Line Road. The store opened on March 28th, 2022. And whereas, an investment of $25 to $50 million is being invested in the Mobile, Alabama area at various Circle K's. The investment will be great for the community, families, and the City of Mobile. And now therefore, I, Councilman Ben Reynolds, and the members of the City Council do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 as Circle K Day. Y'all want to come on down? We'll take a picture.
Fire chief.
Good morning. State Council, Council President, I want to introduce to you this morning firefighter of the month for March 2024, firefighter Zachary Crampert. Zachary has been with us since 2019. He became a paramedic in 2022. He currently serves as a fire medic on Rescue 26, and that's at the public service complex out there by the airport. He's also qualified as a relief driver. We recognize him this month for being embodied of public servant, that response first. Coming from dinner with his family, he witnessed a motor vehicle collision, and he springed into action, told his family, stay right here, and he went and rendered aid and first aid until rescue, other rescue workers showed up. And so we think that's very high of him, and he had that mindset to have that servant's heart. He also teaches on his days off at USA. He helps with the advanced EMT courses and also the paramedic courses. He believes good communication and teamwork makes good on emergency calls and back at the station. Again, introducing you firefighter of the month, Mr. Zachary Crampert.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on May the 3rd on Market Road and April 20th on Ziggler Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moved and second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk. I mean, Vice President.
On the Ziggler Boulevard, we're just changing that to 8:30 in the morning rather than 6:00 in the morning.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for property located at 5032 Government Boulevard.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wanda Cochran, 465 Dauphin Street. I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Debbie's Home Daycare. Ms. Deborah May is my client, and she's sitting back there along with some of her neighbors who will be here to answer your questions today and provide any information that you need. The matter before the council is a request for a conditional use permit. A conditional use, as you probably know, is a use that is specifically allowed by the zoning ordinance so long as the applicant meets the conditions that are set out in the ordinance. The Planning Commission heard this. The Planning Commission determined that she met the conditions, and they have recommended this for approval. Ms. May has operated a daycare for 27 years at this location. This is her home. This is where her husband lives with her. Their children, of course, are grown now. She is having to get a conditional use permit because she wants to increase the number of children from five to 10. That is allowed by the ordinance as long as she complies with the conditions. She is without question qualified and well-educated in this area. She has state certification, national certification, and until she put out a notice that this hearing was today, none of her neighbors even knew there was a daycare operating here. So I listened to some comments at pre-council, and one of the comments was, I believe, the concern was that the approval is forever. Well, the approval is, it is in the zoning ordinance. You may operate a home daycare with 10 children so long as you get a conditional use permit. But this is a site plan specific application. One of the conditions is, it has to be your home. This isn't a commercial business. The state requires her and supports home daycare. I know that sometimes there are concerns that maybe operators may step outside of their boundaries, and there are other tools that the administration and the council has to ensure that the operation stays as it is and has been for the last 27 years. And one of those tools is every year she has to apply for a business license. She has to keep her state certification, and she is routinely inspected by the state. So I will let her talk to you more about her business and her qualifications. If you have any questions, just let me know.
There's a question for Mrs. Cochran from the council.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I recall when this law was passed into our UDC, and you know, the way it was constructed, it was never contemplated for smaller lots in an R1 neighborhood. And you can tell by the, you know, some would say arduous requirements in commercializing of a house, why that makes sense. In large, big R1 lots that exist in various parts of our city, not in a neighborhood, there's adequate room to have these parking requirements. And, you know, unfortunately, in this scenario, that's not really what was contemplated about it. And then I want to say that I'm in support of Ms. May's business, and I'm in support and will encourage everyone out there who wants to operate an in-home daycare. But I think it's also important to note that the City Council has a responsibility to ensure that the, let's see. Health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community are kept in light at heart. And I think based on the successes I've heard from Ms. May's operation of her business, that she operates an exceptional business. And you can tell by the signatures and emails we've received from folks who have sent their kid to Ms. May. It seems like this is the opportune time to make that jump to actually running a full operational business. Unfortunately, in a neighborhood with small lots on top of each other, I don't think that's the appropriate place to do it. So, you know, I struggle with that. And, you know, I look forward to hearing from everyone, but that's where I'm at with it, is that, you know, health, safety, morals, and general welfare have to be priority number one. And the City Council, I think, sort of found the middle ground with the UDC and said, we want these in-home daycares to operate, you know, within the neighborhood. It makes sense. But in order to protect the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the broader community, we've set a cap at five. So that's where we're at. And, you know, you expand this one to 10, you expand another one to 10, what's the point of putting in the reasonable law that we already put in?
The zoning ordinance itself has the cap. I believe the maximum number of children allowed under a conditional use permit in a home daycare like Ms. May's is 12 children. She only is asking for 10. She is currently keeping five. And home daycare is an important piece of the childcare puzzle, and she can explain to you why she has no desire whatsoever to operate a commercial daycare operation. She believes in neighborhoods and the ability of these services in the neighborhoods. She has met and has agreed to comply with every condition that is set out in the ordinance. And I really think that if for some reason one of your concerns comes to light, you have plenty of tools to enforce the conditions that are on this permit. So I'll let her speak.
Well, I got one more question for you, Ms. Cochran. During the Planning Commission, when it went to the Planning Commission, and now they've made our recommendation, it wasn't a 100% vote. But also, there were statements made by the applicant and others that there would be a variance sought to sidestep these sort of reasonable resolutions that we have put into our UDC. Is that your client's intent to get this approval and then go to the Planning Commission and say, well, we don't think we need parking spaces, and we don't need these other reasonable regulations? Board of Adjustment, I'm sorry.
Board of Adjustment, yeah. No, sir. That is not her intent. But I will say, when I was looking at this, I found it quite interesting that the zoning ordinance requires her to have six parking spaces. Infants don't drive. And I don't know where that number came from. I think it would be appropriate for this council in the future to take up that issue because that is a barrier to entry. When you have a requirement like that, if you're trying to keep a home-based business, that kind of parking requirement turns it into the very thing you don't want in a neighborhood. It will be very expensive, but she has agreed to comply with whatever the requirements are.
Just ask one question. I think somewhere in the ordinance, it talks about parking for off-site employees. I think that, you know, I've built a daycare tour in the past and had to adhere to the code. I think it's, is it one administrator for every 12 kids, or is it one administrator for every 20 kids? And if so, then you would only have maybe one administrator there during the day for the number of kids you have, which doesn't generate any additional parking. Is that the case here?
Maybe, Ms. Speaker. In her daycare, she is the primary caregiver. She will be joined by her daughter, who is also working now toward getting her early childhood degree because she is interested in the care of children. So in her operation, it will be Ms. May, and it will be her daughter. Her husband, who also lives in the home, works, and so he is not there during the day. They have a driveway which is sufficiently large to accommodate parking, but our ordinance says you have to adhere to these other parking requirements. The ordinance says what it says, and she has agreed to comply with it, even though it will be a substantial hardship.
Tom, Mr. Kara? Yeah, anyone else from this council? Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Yeah, this is still the public hearing. Anyone else that's president that would like to address this council on this particular said item?
Good morning. My name is Deborah May, and I have resided at 5032 Government Boulevard. I've owned and operated my daycare, as has said, for the 27 years. It'll be 28 in June. I have letters of support from every neighbor on my street. They have always, the few that knew that I had a home daycare, you know, have been supportive, and the others did not even know until I put the big sign that the city requires in my front yard that I even owned a family daycare home. I'd like to say that I feel like I'm an asset to the community by providing a safe and healthy environment for children to learn through play. I am a responsible and respectful neighbor. I am a responsible and respectful childcare provider. I grew up military. I'm an Army brat. My responsibility and respect was one of the big things that were ingrained in us. I think it speaks by the support. I think it speaks by me never having a complaint, by me having no deficiencies, by me being nationally accredited, being a Star Five, which is very rare in our city. It's a new program, but it's the highest rank that you can get within the city. I think that I have proved by the support of the community, the support of the parents, that this ordinance should be approved. So, I mean, I'm fortunate enough to have a daughter that can work for me. She substituted me for years. She's actually worked for three years helping me. I lost all four of my parents in the last few years. So she has helped me while I took care of both of my mother and mother-in-law that had to move in with us. And so because I think quality childcare is so important, I hired her to, or my mother-in-law has hired her to come help with daycare, caring for them, you know, just an all-around, someone else to help in the house so that the quality of care would not decrease for my children that are in my care. I just, I don't know what else to say. I provide a service. The conditional use permit is on the books to be allowed. I don't know how else to, you know, be able to do this other than to I don't know how else to, you know, be able to do this other than to tell you that childcare has been decreasing in the last years. Some of the reasons were that our standards were increased, which that was badly needed. We needed to increase the standards. But when that happened, a lot of people that did family childcare and childcare centers dropped out. The fire department decreased us from six children to five. That decreased the amount of childcare. COVID hit where a lot of the homes went out of business and did not reopen, and that included daycare centers. I know that several people have approached me and said about the childcare center, why, if I have such a good program, why don't I open a childcare center? Due to the fact that I worked in military childcare centers, and when I moved to Mobile, I worked in Atlanta, Georgia. I had three small children. I received free childcare during that time and an income. I moved to Mobile, they gave me nothing. I would have to owe them at the end of the week, you know, in order to provide childcare for my children and work. So that's how I got into family childcare, is because I, you know, was already qualified, you know, but that allowed me to do the family childcare anyway. You know, I just feel like that that has been my calling. I think that the care of the children isn't very important, and I think that that's our future. And anybody that knows anything about child development and their brain development, you know, I primarily keep the younger children from birth until five. They usually leave three and four because a lot of mine have been going to private school. But if you do not give them the environment to thrive, that's where the brain development, the neurons in their brain die off, and they're never going to get that back. So these children need a quality program. Go back to the childcare center. The reason why I don't do that is because you cannot afford to give quality childcare and staff a quality income. You know, I'm willing to forego part of my income because it's going to my daughter. You know, if I did a center, I could not afford to pay, and I'm only paying my daughter $12 an hour, which is not, you know, a lot of money. But you just don't make, there's not enough money to go around to support a center.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a quick comment, and I want to start off by saying, Ms. May, thank you. Thank you for the service you provide to our community. You know, it's apparent that you are operating a first-class operation, and nobody's going to take that away from you as long as I'm in office. I don't want anybody to stand in your way for the service you're providing. But I want to make sure that everybody understands also, but that's not what is before this council. Nobody's trying to take away what you're doing. As a matter of fact, I'm actively encouraging you to continue to do what you're doing. What you're asking for is outside of what you're doing in this high level of care that you're currently providing. It's asking to essentially convert your property to a commercial building, you know, with parking and, you know, all these other standards, fire standards. And I don't know if you have to have a vent hood installed and, you know, essentially converting your property to a commercial building to operate in a neighborhood that wasn't designed for commercial buildings to be into it. So this is not a shot at you or your business or what you do. This is just simply, from a planning and zoning standpoint, again, it was never contemplated for smaller lots in an R1 neighborhood to be used for commercial businesses. And because of your location of where you are, you know, it doesn't fit the character of a neighborhood to have this sort of commercial operation there. So, you know, I would strongly encourage you to continue to try to grow your business, but unfortunately, in the capacity you're looking for, this is just not the right property for that. So, thank you, Ms. May. I appreciate you coming down.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Is NYOS president would like to address the council on this particular set item?
Reggie Hill is my name. I didn't plan on speaking to this, but when we started getting into the weeds of it, I had to address it. This idea about the character of certain things, particularly as the things are stipulated through statute. Again, we've seen week after week for the past several months especially, people wanting to go back and revisit the UDC code. And unfortunately, it seems that we're putting these stipulations and rules before the desires and expectations of the people who pay everybody down here. That's the part that I'm really confused about, if the taxpayers, and it would be something different if there was an inconvenience amongst the neighboring bodies. If there were some complaints, now, we're not prone recently to hold public hearings with matters that are really serious anymore, but when we do have an opportunity for us to have a public hearing set, and no one has came in an adverse manner to go against this, and it doesn't seem that it's going to be an inconvenience to the city, I don't understand why we're debating that. And if we have an opportunity through something as simple as a variance, something that's contingent upon someone being compliant to things that have to go before a planning commission, which is going to have to come back down here anyways, why are we wasting time on it? So I hope that you're going to vote your conscience on this because it seems that with all the things that we're facing in the city of Mobile, let's just compare single parents who are working all the time, people who have inconveniences with fiscal resources and need an outlet for their children to be taken care of during the day so they can provide for them, maybe we keep the safety up that we want to see in the city of Mobile, we're working against them. And that's not really making any sense to me. And I'm sure that there is some serious reason as to why the gentleman from District Four wants to relate so much to the rules. I mean, he chairs that committee. I get it. However, sometimes I'm reminded of a time where people a little like me couldn't read, and that was a rule. It was segregated for us to sit in places. That was a rule. Someone had to speak up for those things. So when you're considering this stuff now, you really need to do that because I think wholeheartedly, this woman has something that is necessary and beneficial, Ms. May, for the city of Mobile, for the area. And again, if her neighbors, her neighbors, the people who are going to be most impacted by this, whether it's through traffic, people coming in and out, whatever the case may be, have no grievance with this, we need to consider how we can support her because that's what we're going to do. Thanks for you on the floor.
Is anyone else would like to address the council on this particular set item?
Good morning. My name is Mackenzie Ogden. I stay at 5754 Antoine Road. I stand before you today especially grateful, grateful to have had the privilege and great luck to have found Ms. Debbie's daycare. As every parent knows, early childcare can be the most impactful decision we make. The future welfare of our children and thereby the communities they will soon reside in as adults is very much at stake. Before my family found Ms. Debbie's daycare, we were concerned for our children's daycare possibilities. The options we explored prior to Ms. Debbie left us with no sense of community, no evidence of exceptional progress, and no indication of establishing core values. When we were fortunate enough to enroll our oldest child in Ms. Debbie's daycare, we joined a family, a family of families bound together by unwavering integrity of Ms. Debbie and Ms. Lizzie. We can honestly never adequately thank Ms. Debbie and her daycare for what she has provided our family and our two wonderful children. Educational backbone to allow for future academic success, the moral guidance to prepare our children for life's inevitable difficult situations, and a forever friend to every child and parent and grandparent lucky enough to have attended her childcare. Please allow the gratitude that I feel, my husband, my mother, to further radiate through our community. I urge you to permit Ms. Debbie's daycare to further develop our future children by allowing more children and parents the privilege of her and her excellent daycare.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this particular set item?
I'll keep this short. My name is Kenneth Worthing. I understand what you're saying. Putting a, talk to me. Putting a vent on the roof for the kitchen is not going to be an eyesore to the neighborhood. Having a professionally installed, engineered sprinkling system is interior to the house, is not visible from the exterior of the house. The driveway is really the only concern. The rest of it is nothing. So aesthetically, can the driveway be modified, enlarged, and still blend in to the surrounding houses? That's it. That's the only consideration.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn?
They have a question. Have, did the planning commissioners have any one come down to oppose it?
No, sir.
Is NYOS staff would like to address the council on this particular set item?
Good morning, council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rossen Butler. I'm a firefighter, paramedic here in the city, resident of District Four. Elizabeth, as we mentioned earlier, is my wife. She is studying early childhood development. She is going to school for that and also working to allow Ms. Deborah to come down here and speak with y'all today. I'd like to say as far as the comments about health, safety, and moral fiber, if I'm not mistaken, I believe this business exemplifies that and exemplifies that. I believe that the service that's provided for these children and their families is a benefit to the community and a needed one inside of this city. And as far as things to be in compliance with the ordinance, I know that Ms. Debbie has worked her entire life. She has built tons and tons of money into renovating her home to make it a place that these children can study and grow and nurture. And I know that she will do everything in her power to continue to comply and find a way to make that work. As far as driveways, I know there are things like circular driveways. I know there are things like, she has a very large driveway. We can imagine a residential home, but her entire backyard has also been converted into a driveway section, say on the left, and then on the right is the multiple playgrounds and things of that nature. As for my family, I support my wife. I support her decision to go into childcare. I'm working a second job at Mobile Infirmary. I also am in the Army National Guard. Our family counts on the income that we receive as well as we love what we do. I've been a part of this family for a number of years now. In my capacity to dress up the Santa Claus or Batman or the Easter Bunny, I do what I can. But I appreciate your time and consideration as matter and hope you'll approve.
Thank you. Is NYOS president would like to address the council on this particular set item?
Mr. President, I'd just make a quick comment that, again, Ms. May's business that she operates currently allows for these things to happen, and I continually encourage that to happen. But that's not what is before the council, is to take that away from her or anyone else. This is a request to expand beyond the law. That's what this is, beyond what the ordinance says. And that's why there's these processes it goes through to consideration, to consider things like lot size. Does that lot size make sense for this sort of operation in a neighborhood? It's not personal. This is about planning and zoning for a city going forward. So just want to make that clear.
Good morning. My name is Jason Williamson. I had the pleasure to be her neighbor for over 20 years. So as somebody who had direct correlation with seeing how she ran her business, seeing that it did not affect us in any way, living directly next door to her, and as everyone has said, you could not tell that it was at home daycare. There was no sign she has a privacy fence in the backyard. You could not tell any of the playgrounds are there, any of the toys are there, anything. She has been an exemplary neighbor. She has always reached out, been a value member to the community. My son actually goes there. Whenever I grew up and seen how well she treated kids and how far she goes in order to take care of her children, it made a huge impact on me and the decision to bring my son there. When my son was actually born, my wife had to take off six months because we could not find childcare. And that put a huge strain on our family because I was the only one able to work and bring in an income. And then whenever she had an opening, we were immediately wanting to take that position. We were in a previous daycare, and all they did was stick him in front of a TV, and that's all he did was watch TV for the entire time he was there. Once he was enrolled into her program, it was night and day difference. The amount of emotions that he shows, the amount of learning that he has done, and as far as he's progressed in the time that he's been there, is extraordinary. I get compliments all the time trying to figure out how he is so developed at his age. I would just really strongly like for it to be passed where she can have another child. Me and my wife are actively trying to have another child, but it also concerns us that are we going to have somewhere to put the second child if we do have another one? It is almost made it to the point to where we're not sure if we can afford to have another one because we can't in this time. Every house has to be a dual-income house. So if we want to have another kid, we have to have somewhere we can put him. And we want somewhere like Debbie's daycare because they treat us like family. They treat him like family, and that really meant a long way with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is NYOS president would like to address the council on this particular set item?
Good morning. My name's Michelle Raven, and I'm the executive director of the Alabama, I'm sorry. My name's Michelle Raven. I'm the executive director of the Alabama Partnership for Children, which is located in Montgomery. The address is 2595 Bell Road. And I'm just here today to support Deborah May's request to expand her capacity of childcare from six, from five children to 10. And just based on some of the conversation that we've had here, I just do want to address that childcare centers in Alabama are licensed by the Alabama Department of Children, of Human Resources, and they do have two categories of care. One is family home and one is centers. Family home includes homes that are licensed for a family or a group, which is five or six, up to 12 children. So if she is able to increase her capacity to 10, she will still fall within what is state-defined as a family childcare home. Through my position with the Alabama Partnership for Children, I've worked closely with Ms. May for over 19 years, and I can attest to the high quality of care that she provides, her professionalism, and her commitment to serving the families in Mobile. I have worked with her as she's increased her education, and then one of the programs at my agency is also assisting Elizabeth to increase her education. There's a shortage of childcare across Alabama specifically for infants and toddlers, and this issue is just not about childcare. It's also a workforce issue. If parents, working parents particularly, do not have a place for their children to go, there's going to be absenteeism at businesses. And then we have parents that may not be able to be in the workforce, which is negatively going to affect our economy here in Mobile. Businesses, what we've seen recently is we've been putting together a report, the roadmap for childcare, along with Voices for Alabama's Children, and we've seen that 67% of moms with children birth to age five are in the workforce. So it really is a huge issue for the state and Mobile. So by allowing Debbie's home daycare to expand, you're providing an important benefit and service to families in Mobile and the economy of Mobile. Like it's been said, Ms. May's childcare home is licensed by DHR. It is rated five stars with the State of Alabama, which is the highest quality that you can have. There's very few centers or family homes in this state that have achieved that quality, and she is nationally accredited. She's worked hard to have this type of care and to provide this high quality of care. So I just want to say this is a value to Mobile. It's a value to her neighborhood. It's a value to the families that she serves, and I just hope that you will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is NYOS president would like to address the council on this particular set item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. John Robb.
Good morning. I'm John Robb. I live at 308 Whacker Lane North. I'm the president of Friends of Mobile Trees. And I've sent you a lot of information, so we don't need to rehash that. I'm here today because you're the appointing authority for the Mobile Tree Commission, and it's very clear to us and our membership, our advisors and board of directors, that the tree commission is not doing its job as spelled out in Chapter 65 of the city code. And I distributed before through Ms. Lambert copies of that, highlighted the portions related to the tree commission. They rarely meet, and when they do meet, they do virtually nothing. And you can read the minutes that are posted on Build Mobile's website to to document the fact that they do very little when they do meet. And a glaring example is very close to home. The reason why I'm here today is the efforts for the last two years to replace the scrub trees that have been removed in West Mobile with a vibrant species that would be more beneficial to the community in so many different ways. And we had an agreement with the tree commission as of last November to do that. After many, many months of discussion, the funding was in place. And all we had to do is really pretty much go ahead and plant after picking a species. The tree commission said that they would select a species at the November meeting. Then it was Christmas, and they said, we'll get to you after Christmas. And then it was, of course, Mardi Gras. And then when we got into March, the new version was that we needed to produce a permit, an approved city permit, to go ahead with the project. Well, as we've said before when we were here a couple of weeks ago, our role is to fund the project, not to plant the trees. That's the, obviously, the purview of urban forestry. And Chapter 65 spells out the tree commission as the authority for coordinating that planting. Yet they say we need to get a permit. But we didn't need to get a permit when we planted trees on Florida Street. We didn't plant them because we gave the trees to the city to plant. And then at Tricentennial Park, same thing. We donated trees to the city, and the city planted them in Tricentennial Park. Anyone, you or our citizens, can go to our website, mobilitrees.org, and see those trees planted. So my question to you as the appointing authority is, why is the tree commission now requiring us to get a permit to give the city money to plant trees? Anyone?
I've got a comment, Mr. President. I can't answer that question specifically, but it seems to me like there's not the capacity for them to plant the trees. It seems like your organization is willing to put up the trees, but right now there's nobody on the other end who has the ability, desire, capacity, want, whatever it is, to plant the trees. That's what it seems like. I mean, I've read the numerous emails I've received from you and, you know, called on others. And I think everybody's appreciative of your organization's willingness and desire to donate trees. But donated trees without somebody to plant them ain't doing a whole lot of good. So my suggestion would be is your organization to figure out a way to plant the trees. And I don't think you'll have anybody standing in the way. I think that's what I've understood it to be, is nobody standing in your way. It's just the capacity to plant the trees ain't exactly there.
That would be a valid comment if it was true. But there is a written agreement with the tree commission to plant the trees.
Yeah, I think your time has expired there. Are you done, Mr. Reynolds?
Also, well, one other, can I add one additional comment?
Yeah, I believe your time has expired, Mr. Daze.
At the pre-conference, Mr. Woods, that the issue was a map.
Mr. Daze.
Urban forestry map.
Your time has expired.
Your time is finished.
Yeah, you can have a seat.
You're allowed to take a seat now.
You can. Thank you so much.
Let me, let me, let me say, Mr. Robb, that this continued back and forth, fighting the tree commission and the appropriate administration officials is going to get you no closer to getting those trees planted. If the tree commission says there are conditions precedent to getting the trees planted, you need to do what the tree commission says. Otherwise, the trees aren't going to be planted. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Ms. Robb, for coming down. And thank you for your, you know, donating and your organization to Florida Street and Tricentennial, of course, those are in my district. So thank you for your service. I do think that, you know, when we have organizations that's willing to support initiatives through our city, we have to figure out what's going on and what's taking place. And so, you know, my ask to the administration to, let's work, try to figure this thing out because we know that beautification is very vital. People love trees in our city. It has made a major difference on Florida Street as well as in Tricentennial Park. So if we can figure this thing out together, that will be very important to move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Carrie Coats.
I'd like to say good morning to our council members. And I am Carrie Coats, President of Kingdom Covenant Connections, here to invite you all to be a part of this year's 19th year celebration in the community. And Kingdom Covenant has this program each year to serve all of these districts. And we have people that come in throughout the state of Alabama, Georgia, Florida, Mississippi, and it's grown. So the first day is a Job Health Fair, which goes throughout the weekend with other exhibitors. And so we are here today with our community affairs partners that has joined in with us to help us to promote this, to help our youth to come out. We are working with the school board at this time so they can come out to this Job Fair because we're looking to, for our youth to continue on their goals in life with, you know, the support of this and bringing it all in one, under one area. That way, the employers are out there, the schools, the colleges are out there, the health officials are out there all three days to support this event. And again, this is not just one district. It serves all districts because we have people that overflow from all the areas, all the cities and the states that come in. And we want to thank you all again for allowing us the opportunity to come before you. This is our 19th year celebration, and we would love to have you all to come aboard with us and our partners. And if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Ms. Gregory, then Mr. Daze.
Ms. Coats, what are your dates again for the declarations?
Okay, September the 13th, 14th, and 15th is the weekend celebration.
Okay. And it's at Lion's Park?
Lion's Park, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate, I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Unity walks are terrific.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And we work throughout the year serving other organizations. We are connected to at least over 10 other organizations that we support throughout the year. And all, like I said, it's all the districts, and we appreciate all the help and support.
Mr. President.
Mr. Daze.
Ms. Coats, I would suggest that you come back to us.
Yes, sir.
A little bit closer to the event, maybe the first August or something like that. And what would be helpful to us at that time is for you to once again speak to us and tell us about the event. And then maybe have a PDF that we could attach to our newsletters and send that out to our constituents. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again to your 19 years.
Sabrina Mast.
Good morning. Sabrina Mast. First, I would like to address the issue with the $92,000 cyber contract, the 321 Z in 2023. Make it clear who in their right mind, as an elected official, gives $92,000 to a company that has only been in operation for three weeks with no bid process. Who are these individuals? Who are their friends? What is the name of this company? What are the names of the people who own this company? Why is this company functioning from a person's home? Why are our tax dollars funding the company from another state? Why did the city council approve this without an investigation before or even after it was flagged? A suspicious contract. Next thing I want to address is Operation Echo Stop. Why was Chief Prime being blamed for the failure of the Operation Echo Stop? When he had said the city council mayor, Barbara Lasky, continued to fund an operation that clearly was a failure.
One second, Ms. May. Can you stop for a time? Ms. Mast, it was brought to my attention that you signed up with comments about the abuse of power.
This is leading to abuse of power.
Yeah, the police chief being placed on administrative leave and...
That's what this is about.
And just, and calling for the public safety director to remove citizens during the meeting.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and free flow then. You want me to free flow?
Yeah, I'm starting a minute back. I'm just...
Okay, come on with it.
Stay on topic. You can start a minute back up. Just stay on topic.
Okay, let's talk about abuse of power. As clearly we know, there is definitely abuse of power. Why are these things that the chief has said clearly that the whole city of Mobile has seen on the news? Why are these investigations not done? Who is over there in these investigations? Why are they not done? Why has the citizens not been informed about these investigations? Let's talk about this abuse of power on these nonprofits. Who's over these nonprofits? Citizens? Where are the citizens' monies going? Where is all this going? We want answers out here. This has clearly been power. We have been addressing these issues not only for years, three years now, but months right at this podium about abuse of power, about unethical issues that clearly have happened. Now, if the chief of police has been attacked, as we see, we are not safe as citizens. If they attack the chief of police, then what we, we are, we are just sitting ducks out here in this society. That's abuse of power. And I'm saying, as a citizen, give us the facts and evidence of what Chief Prime did that was so wrong for him to be placed on administrative leave. Give us the facts. Because, see, people got to understand, abuse of power. The chief has bosses sitting right here at this table. He can't do anything unless they tell him to do it. He can't narrate anything unless they give him the power to do it. So let's just keep it real out here. See, people like to play games in this place, and I'm sick of it. That's abuse of power. You got the citizens out here don't know what's going on. You got citizens, administration, everybody's in a disarray with each other. Everybody taking different sides of the table because we don't know who to trust and what's to trust. This is abuse of power coming right here from this city council and from this administration. We demand some answers. Y'all look at the news the way I am. I went to that rally that had thousands of people out there for this chief. So how is he wrong? We still haven't seen no evidence. Show us the proof. Show us the evidence. And if he has done something wrong, show it to us. Then you got this report coming from Kenya Brown. He's sitting on the same board with y'all. This is fabricated and fake.
Reggie Hill.
My man. Thank you, um, I'm a city clerk. Excuse me, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good afternoon. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to narrate each of us through another episode of As the Plaza Turns. The scenes that we will cover today are those that are listed on the agenda. Let's start with the zoning and community development. I don't have to speak on this much because we just had this issue here today. We need to revisit the UDC, people. And it's unfortunate that certain people in certain areas are treated differently when it comes to these matters. We don't have the time because, you know, 180 seconds is not enough. So we'll just move on to the next speaker. We've got to come back to that. Let's look at this civic centerpiece. I don't understand how we can make a $300 million announcement, and yet there has not been one committee meeting called, whether of the finance committee or a committee meeting of the whole, so that the people can have their input placed in that project. $300 million. And we have not had one opportunity for the public to have a serious say in what's going on. Let's look at these council rules. We have them posterized right outside of here. But yet we've not seen any consistent application of really any of the rules here to even determine how you can chastise someone or charge them for being wrong in this place. These are simple things. We're breaking the rules in here week after week, and then we want to hold the citizens to some new standard, which makes no sense. Let's get to this public safety piece. Thank you so much to the media since last Tuesday coming down here at this podium, basically prophesying something before knowing what was going to come out hours later. They have put public safety front and center in the city of Mobile. Thank you for that. The reason why I say that is because for months, for years, they've come right down here checking on YouTube, talking about the failures of Operation Echo Stop, the insufficiencies of ShotSpotter, these contractual irregularities. And let's just look at the last two months alone. This surveillance stuff, I can count five times at minimum, just in two months, coming down here talking about the surveillance, forensics, all these cameras and investigating in cyber. So thank you, media, because it's different when a citizen comes out here and you label or attack one certain, a certain way. But then when you get to get that information from the inside, that's a different leverage. So we got a lot of work to do here, my people. So it's not looking as much as someone coming down here attacking y'all anymore. We're getting to the truth, to the facts of what's really happening. And we need to get it resolved if we want to improve the quality of life. We all around here talking about how we want this to be better and all these kinds of things. That's hogwash until we start focusing on what's necessary for the people. So I'm hoping this is the last sign that you need as well. Because you have, you also come down here and say, God, and gave y'all one more time. God, and gave you one more opportunity to get this right. Well, this is a big one here. And if you want it to actually be the way it's supposed to be, you better have everybody at the table. The truth better be revealed. And you better stop chastising people because of your personal stuff. Because again, it's nothing to do with the personnel. It's the personnel. Thank you, using the floor.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over. 64024, rezoned property located at 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive from R1 to B1.
Move to table.
Second.
Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Item pass.
64026, rezoned property located at 4600 Cypress Business Park Drive from B3 and B5 to B3.
So moved. Second.
Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Item pass.
64027, consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 64, Article 5, Section 5 of the Unified Development Code.
Move to table.
Second.
Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Item pass.
Resolutions held over. 01319, authorized agreement with Aldat for traffic plan for special events at the University of South Alabama. 08320, approved purchase order to Image Trend for annual renewal of software. 21330, authorized contract with Dorries Inc., new business as Azalea City Golf Course Grill. 37332, consider the application of Sonia Jordan to operate a shuttle service.
So moved.
Second. Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Item pass.
Ordinance is being introduced. 64028.
Move to layover based on council rules for one week. For council rules, this will layover for one week. Sorry.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 31338 through 6356.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read. Second.
Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Rules waived.
31338 and 339, authorizing, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant to the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for the fiscal year 2024 State Homeland Security Grant Program and to the Community Foundation of South Alabama in support of Parks and Recreations After School and Summer Programs. 58340, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group 1650. 60341, approve or award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month. 60342, 343, 344, and 356 are determining appropriations to Ariel Holloway Elementary School, Just For Development Laboratory School, Forest Hill Elementary School, and Prince of Peace Parish, Mobile. Serve a public purpose and authorize payment.
So moved. Second.
Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Item pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced. 08345.
Per council rules, this will layover for one week.
Resolutions being introduced. 01346 through 08354.
Per council rules, these resolutions will also layover for one week.
Public hearings. Call for public hearings. 41355, call for public hearing to consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 145, 151, 176, 195, 350, and 400 Dunlap Drive, scheduled May 21st.
So moved. Second.
Prop the move in second and in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All the polls? Public hearings called.
Announcements. Next week's council meeting, April the 23rd, will be held at 3:00 PM. The pre-meeting will be held at 9:00 AM.
District 6, Councilman Woods. Only announcement I have is just reminding everybody to get out and vote today with spring break. Obviously, there's a lot of folks out of town, but not a whole lot of activity probably at the polling location. I know where I, when I went this morning to vote, I'd say, but I would like to encourage everybody just to, when you're out and about, get out and vote.
District 2, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements, Mr. President.
District 5, Councilman Daze.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a District 5 community meeting next week, a week from today, Tuesday. Tuesday, uh, April twenty-third at six o'clock P M at the E R Dixon Elementary School, which is located at the corner of, uh, University Boulevard and Bittensbur Road. At six o'clock, week from today, at E R Dixon University and Bittensbur. It, uh, with everything else that's going on, it may have escaped everybody's attention that we have a municipal election coming up, uh, next year, next August. And I wanted to, uh, say that while it has been my great pleasure and honor to serve the residents of District five, I will not stand for reelection at that time. Thank you, Mr. President.
You had to blow us up like that today. District four, Councilman Reynolds?
Very briefly, uh, Mr. President, I want to just let the general public at large know that, you know, we, we've been watching the news too. We, we're following it just as you are. We're, me specifically, I think, the entire council. We're just, we're in a fact-finding stage of all of this. And, um, we look forward to receiving the, the Kenyon Brown report, you know, very soon. And, you know, we'll read through it. And, um, you know, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, District one, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. On this past week, I had the opportunity to participate in an Aurora Flight Automobile International Airport for Breeze Airways. It was phenomenal. Um, we had the opportunity, um, the plane was built right here in Mobile by Airbus, and it was just a, a great experience. I want to encourage everyone, if you're looking to take your family, friends, to get out. Um, and we have flights out of Orlando, from Mobile to Orlando, very affordable. Um, so it was a great experience. I also want to remind everyone to get out and vote. Remember, if you want to have, um, a voice, um, your vote matters. So get out and, um, and cast your vote. And as well to the midtown community, we will have our community meeting in May. More information will be coming. You also receive a mailer in the mail regarding that date and time. And so we're excited about that. And I also want to join in with my colleague, Councilman Reynolds. We, as a council members, uh, we see exactly what's going on, uh, but we're waiting to get the facts and information, um, and, and, and then we will move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, District seven, Vice President Gregory?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, I do want to remind everyone, just as, uh, Councilman Woods did, that today is a runoff election. I know it does get lost a little bit with, uh, spring break and that sort of thing, but, um, the runoff election does impact our, my district in particular. So just remind everyone, polls are open until seven o'clock. Um, also, as you have heard, um, from a couple of the council members today, um, we too hear all of the media reports. And, um, it has been a difficult week, I think, for everyone. But, uh, public safety, of course, remains our number one priority here in the government and City Hall. And, um, we are looking forward to the report, which will be in next week.
Agreed to the citizens of District three. Last, um, yesterday, uh, we had a, uh, opportunity to, uh, cut the ribbon at the third recycling center here in the city of Mobile. Uh, it was a great, um, ribbon cutting on yesterday. Uh, we had many citizens to, uh, show up and also the, uh, administration. Uh, thank you all so much for helping leading the charge on this. Um, the residents, uh, in District three, especially, uh, South D I P N is very grateful for the, uh, recycling center. And, um, it just surprised me how many people was pulling up yesterday and started using it. So again, this, uh, recycling center is open to all the public. And again, thank you all so much. And thank everyone who had put their hands in to make this a reality on yesterday, especially, uh, Casey Callaway, uh, the Peninsula Group, and also the Riverside and A D M and et cetera, the beverage company, uh, from my understanding. Also, on April the twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday, um, the Office of Supply and Diversity is having a money move boot camp. Uh, leveling up your finances. This would take place at the Sullivan Community Center, uh, starting at one thirty P M to four o'clock P M. Again, if you're trying to, you know, get, you know, straighten up your income, um, get better credit scores, um, learn how to, um, buy houses, your financials, please register, or, you know, either call, uh, two zero eight, uh, seven nine six seven, again, two five one, two zero eight, seven nine six seven to register. Again, this is a free event. Uh, we'll be posting this on my Facebook page. If anyone would like to, um, get more information from it and also my newsletter. Again, this would take place on April the twenty-seventh, uh, from one thirty to four o'clock P M at the Sullivan Community Center. And again, this is open to, uh, automobile residents, uh, especially, um, District three, uh, especially the, uh, South End of District, uh, South End of D I P, excuse me, on May the sixth.